Policy committee meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We'll just kind of go through and do a quick introduction. Michelle Thompson, I'm a trustee, a mother of students that graduated from Lakeland School District, and grandmother of students in Lakeland School District.
Lisa Arnold, superintendent, and I have two daughters who graduated from Lakeland High School.
Melanie Worth, librarian who lead at Timberlake Middle School, also attended Lakeland School District, and my children are from Lakeland School District.
Shannon Ryder, principal assistant at Timberlake Middle School and High School, and I have a fourth grader and sixth grader.
Aubrey Nunez, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Twin Lakes Elementary.
Amanda Leach, and I teach at Garwood.
Joanne Coffey, I teach at Twin Lakes, T E and Music. And I have kids.
Jerry McDevitt, I'm a Lakeland graduate. I had three children that graduated from Lakeland, and I teach third grade in West.
Nate Potter, compared to four, one to him, it is double elementary.
Dee De La Paz, I have a daughter at Timberlake. Janelle Dexter, librarian at Lakeland Middle School, future grandmother, or grandmother of future Lakeland student. I like that.
Cindy Lautzen, I am the librarian at John Brown Elementary School. I have a freshman at Lakeland High School and others' kids that have grandchildren.
Tiffany, I'm a district employee and two students who graduated many years ago.
Mike Petasi, I'm an English teacher over at Lakeland High School.
Melanie Spicer, art teacher at Twin Lakes Elementary.
I'm Lacey Jackwitz, I have three kiddos in the district, and I work in sped at Twin Lakes.
I'm Allison Knoll, I am a teacher at Lakeland High School and parent to two future Hawks.
Rebecca Haas, 24 years in the district, live in the community, have a senior graduating this year, sixth grader over at the middle school, so very vested.
Beth Lettsig, I teach English at Lakeland High School, and trying to get our son and his wife to move over so that we'll have some Hawks in the future.
Mary Conrad, former graduate, to have two graduates, and I teach in the district. Thank you.
Lynn Pasley, I have two graduates and a senior that's leaving.
Mariah Parker, board clerk, and I have a first grader at Garwood.
All right. A lot of you are familiar, some of you are not, we just usually jump into a policy, review it, bring out suggested changes, just toss it out there. We talk about what's in the best interest of our district as a whole, and once we make all the corrections, then we send the policies out for parent feedback, and community feedback, and staff feedback, and then it goes to the board. Well, then it comes back to the committee, we make any changes based on the input, and then it goes to the board for review and approval. So, last week, we were able to work through 2,500. I did bring my notes from those of us that did work on it, but we didn't have access to the policy. And I'm very proud of everyone that was here from last week that was there, the week before, because we kind of hit all the topics correct. But I did bring my notes. So, do we want to read through 2,500 again to make sure we're on top of where we were at? Or do we want to jump into 2,510, which is where we ended last week?
Michelle, one question.
Sure.
And I might have missed it last week. I know that we had had a conversation about giving avenue for patrons to also question material, but I don't know if that made it in there. Do we know if that made it in there, or if that was across the board decided against? I don't recall the outcome of that, I just don't remember seeing it go in there.
Okay. Well, we said custodians. I think that's where we discussed, the students' parents' custodians? Is that what we're thinking?
Well, custodian would be of a student. It wouldn't be just a hand.
That's what I'm thinking. I wonder if that's where we decided, but I don't know.
Because I remember we talked about people from the public coming into the school, but then, you know, safety issues and everything like that coming into it.
I think, in my mind, it wouldn't necessarily them be coming in to like, obtain the book, but just in the aspect that if, you know, the taxpayers are paying for the material, that if they said, "Oh, do you have this book in your library?", you said, "Yes, we do", that they could question the appropriateness of that book. That was my only thought, of just giving them an avenue, like, if they're paying for it, do they get any avenue to question that they're paying for?
I feel like our challenge process includes that we're patrons in the district.
But it doesn't specify, it doesn't say.
It doesn't state that.
The language in the law does not include patrons. We can, and that's what we talked about, was we can do more than, we can't do less than.
So, like, can a grandmother challenge a book? Can a grandmother submit a comment? Is that a, I assume that's not a custodian? So, the current language, a grandmother would not.
Right. Right. But we can add language to allow that, as far as, you know, taxpayers.
I get that it's taxpayers' money, but I worry that you'll have people looking for things where they don't, looking for things that they don't include. I mean, if you understand what I mean. It's just, I feel like you've got people who are not, their kids are not within the district, and they're just going to be coming and looking for things that they can start things with. And that, I, my own personal opinion, I feel is, yes, they may be taxpayers, but you've got, it's the parents, it's the guardians, it's the custodians, it's the students, who really should have a say on what is in the libraries, because they're the ones that are using it, they're the ones that are reading the books and requesting things out. Just my own opinion.
And I think states where they did allow anybody have now backpedaled on that, because it opened up such a huge problem, that they didn't foresee all the problems, and now they like, tried to undo that, like, for example, Florida has just said, "No, we need to not do this." It's not good.
I think we'll have to beware of our language when we run a levy on good schools, and these things matter to the entire community. So, if we're saying that these matter, that all of these things that you're funding matter to the entire community, but not enough that you have a say in what's in our libraries, I think we're sending mixed messages. So, I think we just have to be cognizant of that.
I guess the question of if it's going to cause problems, like in Florida, can probably be estimated by past info, like, have we had, like, a rash of tons of info that you can't process on past applications for librarians? I don't think we have.
I don't either, and I guess, I, just my two cents, I hear what you're saying, Tiffany and Janelle, but the challenge process is pretty specific, and the language in the law is pretty specific with regard to what the state of Idaho is saying is harmful to kids, and that's really what they're challenging. So, I guess if somebody has a concern about a book because they feel like it might be harmful, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with taking a look at that book. And then if the committee feels like it doesn't meet the definitions as prescribed by law, then that goes to the board, and the board takes action on it. But I do agree with Lacey, when we're trying to talk to patrons about supporting our schools, we really do, we being Lynn and I, really highlight for them that even if you don't have kids in our school district, you should be really proud of what we do and how we do it, and if we're kind of closing the doors on them, I think, it feels a little bit like we're talking out both sides of our mouths, so that's just my two cents.
And I think if we have a really strong challenge process, then some of those concerns will just be created, because honestly, whoever brings it, if it's not a good book, it's not a good book, if it has content that's harmful, I mean.
I think my concern, though, is that you'll have Tom, Dick, and Harry going, scrolling through our catalog, which they're already doing, and we know that they are, and they're going to bring frivolous suits on books that they're finding, which we've already found that some are actually removed, but the, yeah, Destiny, but the catalog has not, the record has not been removed yet. So, we found that, so we just, I don't know, it just, to me, it feels like we've already got somebody going through our catalog, perusing it and scrutinizing it. We've done our due diligence to make sure that we have removed everything that is in our libraries that is not appropriate, made sure that we've had our libraries geared towards the age group that they serve, and to have somebody just come from out of the woodwork and say, "Well, I don't like this book because it says this, or it shows this", and they, I don't know, I just, I feel like we're opening, I feel like it opens up for a lot of lawsuits to just, this whole thing.
They can't, because the state of Idaho has it pretty clearly defined as to what can go forward in a lawsuit. If it's not on merit, it's not going to go forward. So, I think, I hear your argument, but it's.
Last week, with it, there is a pretty gray area in the state law with homosexuality. Well, we are getting clarification on that. So, I did, I did reach out, and there will be clarification from the state, there will be guidance on what that exactly means.
But we don't have it yet.
But we don't have it yet, so we will be able to really clearly define all of that. I'm not, I'm not worried about frivolous lawsuits, because I agree with Dee. Our challenge is going to be tied right back to the law, and as long as we don't have a book that has anything that, that the committee agrees, this is harmful to kids, then we wouldn't want the book there anyway. And if the committee says, "No, this doesn't meet this definition, and this is why", then we're covered. They could file a lawsuit, but if we can prove to the court that it doesn't match, and we would obviously, if that was where we were going, our attorney would weigh in. I just, I feel like we're in a place right now where we have to build community, we have to build confidence with the community, we have a lot of new people in the district, and the best way to do that is to allow people to participate. And, I don't know, I guess, maybe I'm Pollyanna, but I don't think, I don't think we have people in our community who are just waiting to get us. I think that there may be some people who are interested in the books we have, and to your point that you just mentioned, if we've taken the book off the shelf, but somebody's forgotten to take it out of Destiny, it looks like it's still there. That's an easy fix, if somebody reaches out and says that. So, I'd rather know that. But I think my concern is just that they're going to be going through, and if you, you know, Melanie and Cindy and all of us, we've always, we use BookLook.org, BookLooks.org, we do all of that, and we go through these things, and we know, just from looking on those lists, and looking at some of the titles on there, that they have gauged as one way, or they've given this number in a rubric. And Melanie and I have read it, and we're like, it doesn't, that doesn't make sense. You know, sometimes it's over and above, or I mean, it's lower than what they've given it. We find that it's not unacceptable, and yet, on BookLook.org, they have a lot more of a stricter look, is that what I'm saying, Melanie, is that right? And so, we don't always agree, and so, I mean, I feel like people are going to look at this stuff, and they're going to look at these, you know, Claim Books for Kids, and BookLooks.org, and all of that, and they're just going to take step out of context, because they're seeing, all they're seeing is a little excerpt, and then all of a sudden, they're going to start saying, "These books are not appropriate, these are not..." Well, you have to read the book in its entirety to understand the context of it. Right, and that's part of the process that we have in place, so nobody, if we go down the challenge road, nobody's going to bring to the board a recommendation for or against that is based solely on just what internet reviews say. People will have to read the book.
That's our proposal.
And I guess the other thing I want to say, and we do have three of our librarians here, is, and the, and the policy even says it, that the district is entrusting, like, there's definitely a respect for the work that you do, and we trust you. So, I'm going into this just more along the lines of, we don't have anything to hide. You guys are doing good work. If somebody has a question about a book, let's look at it. That's how I'm looking at it.
So, if that's the case, why have we taken out the language that said that the librarian, the principal, and the superintendent are the ones determining its educational value? Why are we putting together a committee instead of trusting the people of that?
It's part of the law. There has to be a committee.
So, can we revisit that possibly? Just because after last week's meeting, and just thinking about it more, visiting with staff and community members, just kind of trying to process that, I guess, I struggle with, and I think this might maybe help solve the problem of just a lot of people, or not a lot of people, not very many people, but wanting to pull a lot of books, and having that issue. If we had a different line of succession of that, so, back to librarian and principal, and then possibly even, I don't know what order, where the library committee would fit, instead of just library committee first, because I think we'll run into, or possibly, and maybe not, but worst-case scenario, we run into a lot of books being pulled, and then being stalled there at the library committee, because this is a volunteer committee that would be doing that, and taking a lot of their time, and if they had a stack of books to be trying to go through, there's a lot of teachers waiting for those books to be approved. I think that'd become the issue, like, our supplemental curriculum committee, where they're just very overwhelmed, or there's just a lot of people on the committee, and knowing that we can trust our librarians and our principals, and knowing that that, like, that fine wouldn't fall on them, because we are doing something about it in 30, and of course, our librarians and principals would say, if it was something that was up for question or harmful, then that would be taken care of. I think, I don't know, I feel like that gives educators, like, the voice for that. Like, we are very, like, we're able to make this decision, and then if it's really challenged, then it goes to the library committee, and they don't all get stalled there. Does that make sense?
I guess, no, maybe. So, are you talking specifically about a challenge?
A challenge, yes, I am.
Because that's outlined in law, so we can't, we can't do less than what the law is telling us, so we need to make sure that we're adhering to whatever that law says.
I thought last week, we decided we were putting the library committee to decide that if that book is reviewed or not, so maybe I misunderstood. I thought, because we talked about if it goes typically, our old policy said librarian and principal, and then superintendent of needing to become involved, and then school board, and we added the library committee and removed a lot of those people in those steps.
Yeah, so we just would have to go back to, to what, I don't remember exactly what the law says.
That policy, right?
That's when that's in front.
Do they have to be the first step? I guess, is that the law, that the library committee has to be the first step?
The principals.
Because we talked about last week, we want. It was said that we would want to have that as the first step, and I guess that was my question.
Yeah.
I don't know.
As a building principal, I don't know that I would have wanted to read every single book that a parent had a concern over, because I didn't have time to do that.
But if the librarian and the building principal were the first step, as a team together, I guess that's.
But they would both have to read the book.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm saying, I don't, I, as a building principal, I didn't have time to do that. I don't know that I would want to put that on the board of principals. Are we expecting a lot of books to be challenged?
Well, that's what we're hoping if we.
Exactly. There's a bounty out there, so who knows?
If we're thinking about it being challenged, then I think the librarian and the principal.
Twelve thousand books.
Yeah.
Okay, so just two, two quick things. So, I think clarification, just to make sure I'm understanding this right, that just because a book is brought into this process, doesn't mean there's a fine, as long as we pull that for review, and then, and then send it to that committee. So, it's not, it's not like every book is an automatic fine, correct? It's just, it's, it, okay. And then, I.
It's not an automatic thing.
Right, no, it's in. Right.
I read the, I read the law, or the bill, excuse me. I guess, maybe I'm a little naive, and I do work with younger children, I would find it rather disturbing if we had a lot of books that could, could be found that would fit these descriptions. So, I have a hard time thinking that it's going to be a lot.
I think it's better, but I would tell you, when we started this process a year ago, how many books have we pulled from Lakeland High School?
Oh, I'm not the high school.
Well, I'm just at the high school.
How many have pulled at the high school, Melanie?
And it was alarming.
It was a lot.
A lot.
It was alarming what was in there, and some of the books were purchased in the 80s, and hadn't been checked out, but when you pulled them out, they fit every definition of what's harmful for kids, so we were.
So, like, we don't want to be protecting those in our library, we don't want them there. Well, I, as a parent, wouldn't, and so, I can't speak on behalf of everybody as a we, but I, as a parent.
But we are doing our due diligence, and so, to your point, I don't anticipate that it's a lot, but I can't, we have tens of thousands of books, and some of them have been on the shelf for a long time, so I cannot say with 100% certainty that we have found all of the books that shouldn't be there, so.
But it's not opening us up to unnecessary fines, if somebody brings it to our attention, "Oh, I see this, we can handle it."
Yes, yeah. I don't see this as being a big deal, and I do think that by including our community, like, I just don't think we can, we can talk out both sides of our mouths. They're either, they're either important to us, and we're, we're building relationships with the community, and this should be the focal point of, like, that we're so proud of Lakeland School District, and what we're doing for kids, and, because if our district is doing well, people's property values go up, and that's good for everybody, and those are some of the things we talk to them about, when we're talking about why you should support our schools. It's hard to go and do that if we're saying, "You should support our schools, because we're really good, but we don't, we're not going to allow you to have any part in any of the processes." I just, I just think that that's politically not a great place for us to be. And I don't, I really don't think this is going to be a big deal. I mean, if it becomes a really big deal, I guess we have to revisit it, but do you think it's going to be a big deal?
Me?
Yeah.
But we are taking it to the library committee first, I guess, is my question. I guess that was, and I'm not trying to be a pain, no, I'm trying to challenge it, but that was just my, that's what we were really rethinking as, like I said, as I spoke with community members and staff at my school, of like, the fact that it's first step to the library committee, is like, ooh, we're already seeing these struggles with the supplemental curriculum committee.
Right, but, but this, I guess this is different. In my mind, I see the library committee actually as being a little bit of a protection for the staff, because what I would not want to do is have a challenged book where the librarian now is solely responsible for making a decision and a recommendation to the board as to what to do with that book, and the challenge goes further, the person who take, who doesn't take the appropriate action is the person who's going to get the fine. By taking it away from the staff member and directly to the committee, and then to the school board, it takes the staff out of that. It is a little bit of a protection for the staff. And then it's not one person making a decision, it's three to five, all reading the book, and put, give them forth a recommendation. So, it's not, it's not on one person's shoulders. That's my, that's my, my biggest concern, I guess. We're not, I'm definitely not saying I don't trust our staff, because I 100% trust our staff. I know our staff make great choices for kids and do good things for kids. That's, that's not part of my thinking at all. I just want to protect the staff. But again, I think we need to go back to the law also, and make sure that what we're writing aligns with the language in the law.
As part of that process, when someone challenges, there's a form that they fill out, correct? So, within that form, how specific must the challenge be? Because I think that will help ultimately the committee, if they can state, you know, on this page, so they can, so we can know exactly what they're referring to, and that would streamline a great deal, just by having that, it's like, okay, these are the perceived typicals with the book, let's look at that, and say, oh, okay.
Is that a form that's going to come with the law? Or is that a policy?
We're working on it.
Oh, okay.
It's one of the things we're still working on.
Yeah, I think that would probably help a lot if they had to be really specific with page numbers, and, yeah.
This is the reference, it's again in chapter five, whatever.
And that hopefully would help.
If they actually read the book.
Yeah, I mean, that might help with some of the concerns about it just being an arbitrary, throwing it out there, you know.
Yeah, it seems a lot more valid.
I read on Facebook that, yeah.
Yep, and we have the different definitions of what's harmful to kids from statute, they can identify which part of that they're applying.
What, can we cross-reference within that form, what the actual statute is, so that it's, oh, okay, well, it hits.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that we take those definitions.
So, there's no, there's no, well, I think it is, or whatever.
Okay.
And that form is formulated?
It's, I think it's one of the things we're supposed to be looking at as part of this thing. Sorry, Sean, I'm not going to.
You're totally fine. This is for review, and we can sort of, because I don't know what.
And this does not cover classroom library? I see that's taken out, so that's something totally different, class libraries? I think we're probably going to have to talk about writing a policy that is specific to classroom libraries.
It's like a whole different model.
Okay, yeah.
We address just, you know, totally different.
Because those individual teachers are responsible for everything that's in those books, so we just want to make sure we're writing a policy that everybody's comfortable with.
It's too stressful.
What you're asking of other people, it says district, I was like, it's right there.
That's our old policy.
So, that's been already taken out or made? No, that was retained, is what it's stating, is as district residents or parents, guardians, student in language, attending the district, they be allowed access to library books.
So, can we not say district residents can submit grievances? Like, can we say in there that it's only, is that in there? Instead of just local from Court Lane?
Would it be or?
When we were talking about the grievances.
I know.
It says, they have already just.
I guess it could be and/or. Because that, to me, is just, all of these people have the opportunity.
Sorry? So, I think we also talked about being specific that it should be within the district, or, what patron was that, was that the word that you were?
It says on this part, it's all policy district.
Yeah. Just so that we are opening it up to the.
Well, this is just can.
But I think it needs to be.
So, this is on the 25th page. What is that, with the grievances?
Thank you.
No, that's on the backside, so it's on the, it's part of the same policy, it's just listed elsewhere.
That's who can.
Yeah.
But I was saying, we should.
They have always those people to come forward, so to me, that's why it's and, but if we want it to be or, but it's district residents or parents guardians attending the district, so it should be the same.
I would say and, because it's, all of those people can challenge.
Correct.
So, it would be or, and, could be any of them.
Why not just change it? Student, um, resident of the district, that's loose, doesn't it? Any student parent who took custodial legal guardian of a student, or resident of the district.
Okay.
Within the district, I mean, if that's what you're trying to.
It's supposed to be or.
So, just call it or.
Just fucking each other.
Or, whether the resident of the district, or, it states district resident.
Just so we had a consistent. Just so we had a consistent.
And the paragraph right above it, since it's district residents.
Any other questions or comments on 2510 at this point? Going back to 2510, we didn't get all the way through it. I don't believe, I think we were just at the very end. This was selection of library materials. 2510P, not 25. Just 2510. There's a 10 and a, oh, and a procedure. So the district has libraries in every school, which primary objective of implementing and supporting the educational program in the schools. District libraries provide faculty and students with materials that enrich and support the curriculum and meet the needs of the students and faculty served. Provide students with a wide range of educational materials based on age-appropriate content and reading ability, appealing to a wide range of interests in a variety of formats, and supporting the presentation of different points of views. Select materials that present various ideas of issues, giving students an opportunity to develop critical thinking skills. Select materials in all formats, including up-to-date, high-quality, varied literature to develop and strengthen a love of reading. The Board affirms the principles of intellectual freedom inherent in the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. School librarians are entrusted with the responsibility for building and maintaining a collection of age-appropriate materials that adhere to district guidelines and policies. The Board of Trustees is responsible for, okay, the Board, let's check that out simply because, is responsible for approving all selected materials. The Board entrusts the superintendent to oversee the librarians and the selection of library materials. Library materials may include but are not limited to print books, recordings, digital materials, periodicals, and newspapers, and even equipment. The selection policy and its related procedure shall apply to all types of library materials. Okay, so, didn't we say up here? Something about pranking the law?
I think we took out the word even.
Yeah, because we were like, making fun of it.
It should have been just andy.
Maybe related equipment.
Well, what I'm curious, up here, I thought select materials in all formats, including up-to-date, high-quality. What equipment are we talking about?
ECRs?
Hotspots? Do we do hotspots?
Chromebooks, we maybe check out Chromebooks.
But we don't check them out.
Or projectors, like we knew you used your, like, stuff.
That's the reason I thought.
I'm wondering if it's like, like, you're putting together some diagram or something that's like, like, equipment makes sense though for that.
We used to check out equipment, we don't anymore. We used to have like iPads and stuff that we checked out.
Oh, okay.
Stuff like that.
This is a.
But we don't check out anything anymore.
Of library materials, it's not about checking.
Not that, no, I'm sure. So I'm sure the elementary does.
Would it be worth a change? So like, and any available equipment?
But it goes through, if they were going to check something out, would that be tech?
Right, but what is, my understanding of what's being said is not checking the items out. It's about, this is what's in our library. So are you saying that's not in our library? Okay, so we don't have equipment in the library?
Is it possible that?
We don't have microfiche?
No.
True. I mean, we used to have quite a bit that was checked out through the library, but.
The only thing that our students check out from our library that would be deemed equipment would be a hotspot. So I don't know, that's something that falls under this category. But that's really the only thing that we have that would be considered equipment, would be the hotspots that we loan the students over the.
The counselors request those for the students.
And we, we don't do those. Yeah, that comes through.
We can move that to text test. I know that we check those out through our library and our students also check out Chromebooks through our library when they don't have theirs, so.
But they're actually just helping technology by doing.
Right.
They're not in our library program, we check them out through the tech.
So the way, but the way I'm understanding it is this policy is representing what's in the library. So, do we want to keep equipment in there or do we want to take it out?
I don't think it's necessary.
It may include but are not limited to, does that cover if you take it out?
Just in case we ever have a piece of equipment.
All right. Okay, so the district school library shall adhere, the district's. Library shall adhere to district policies. Is there anything else within this that people want to have conversation on or change or discuss? So we'll go to 2510P. This is all blue.
Oh, great.
So this is selection of library materials procedure. So the selection of library materials is a professional task conducted by the library staff. The librarian shall plan the acquisition of new materials as well as maintenance and taking of inventory of library materials. This should include a review to determine whether materials should be removed as part of the de-selecting process.
Do we call it de-selecting?
We call it reading. Reading. All throughout ISBA, they call it de-selecting, so we just have to pick another word.
Culling?
If we don't like, de-selecting.
The culling process?
That doesn't sound.
The purge?
As part of the purging process? We call it. That the acquisition of new materials is solely at the discretion of the librarian. However, supplemental, there's a lot of items that are coming through that are specific to schools, not necessarily classrooms. So are those, those are specific to libraries? And are those coming from the teachers to put into the library? Or are they coming from the librarian because of like book fairs and all of that sort of stuff? Acquiring new books for the, I'm under the assumption of the library. I just don't want it to say that it's just the library. If we have teachers and principals and everybody else weighing in when there's book fairs, et cetera, to say, let's get these back into our library.
So, I guess I would let them speak to it. I think that the process is actually collaborative because they do collaborate with staff in their buildings.
But the supplemental is not bringing library books for library use, it's only for classroom use.
For classroom instructional use. But they do, is that accurate? You guys do collaborate with your teachers about books that you're going to add to the library? I mean, they're the ones who are responsible for the acquisition of them, but they do collaborate.
Well, and students as well, right? You guys give a lot of student voice if there's a.
A lot of students.
A high book in demand that students want and they're asking for, and so. You get a lot of student consideration of what book they're asking for. I have a lot of kids asking for books that I'm like, yeah, no, that's not coming. But you allow the students to.
I have a list, yeah, they, they can write down the title and the author they want. And then I check it and review it and see if it's appropriate and then, then I'll.
Library staff. Library staff, or is it just the library?
At the elementary level, it's librarians, but at our high schools, there are.
There's more, okay. This should include a review to determine whether materials should be removed. Okay, so.
Changing that to reading, is that what we wanted?
Or just put a period after remove?
Sure.
Good job, Tim.
I have a degree in English.
And maybe a degree in library media.
Yeah, we don't talk about that.
In selecting library materials, the librarian order designee.
That second sentence in that top paragraph is terrible. The librarian shall plan the acquisition of new materials as well as the maintenance.
And taking of inventory.
Taking of inventory, and that doesn't, like, that's, the parallel structure is not there for that.
So it should just be, the librarian shall plan the acquisition of new materials as well as maintaining library inventory.
Or since it's planned, it should be maintained.
As well as maintain.
Library inventory of library materials, that's what I would do.
Just maintain.
I'm not even an English teacher, but I just didn't read right.
Read well.
Read right. Correctly, do not read correctly.
Correctly or left. Don't ask me about who'd whom.
I can teach you the one. And maintain inventory of library materials.
In collaboration with the staff. Includes.
In collaboration with the holding staff.
They're helping us with inventory.
It's plan the acquisition of the materials. As well as maintain, so you might have a book that. Very few kids are checking out that you might check with teachers to see.
What materials should be removed. So it's not okay to change. This includes reviewing whether materials should be removed.
Yep.
And then, yeah. In selecting library materials, the librarian, or that whose sentence it means.
Well, at a high school, they have an, they have an assistant.
But would the assistant be designee that and?
I wouldn't put that on turn.
Well, would it be library staff again? Does it say library staff?
I would, I would make it the librarian. Because the head librarian at the two high schools isn't going to, they're not going to delegate that to, they're, no, not in selecting material.
All right, so in selecting library materials, the librarian will consider whether they fill a gap between the existing collection and the wants of the students and staff. I would change that to requests and needs of students and staff. Are they wants? I'm stuck on the they, should it be the material?
The librarian will consider whether, colon. But then you've got the, then you've got to start.
Whether materials. I wish they would say materials specifically. Yeah. So this policy hasn't even been adopted once.
This doesn't exist in our policy manual right now.
Whether the materials fill a gap between the existing collection and the wants of the students and staff. So you were saying the.
Staff requests and needs, I would think would be better than saying that.
All right. Veruca. I want a golden.
Whether the materials are integral to the instructional goals, curriculum, or curricular or extracurricular programs of the school. Whether the materials are appropriate for the reading level, understanding, and access abilities of students in the school.
Can we, do we have, can we take access out?
I don't know what that means. Whether the materials reflect the interests and relevant needs of the students, staff, and parents.
Parents would. Right, but. Yeah, exactly, when do we ask the parents?
I don't know. We're not bullying the library for the parents' need.
Do you even need the? Yeah, we used to. That's what I was wondering, they're very similar.
One seems, one seems to cover.
Consider whether the materials warrant inclusion in the collection because of literary, historical, or artistic value and merit.
Artistic value doesn't have nudity in it.
Whether the materials present information with the greatest degree of currency, accuracy, and clarity possible.
Currency, what?
I think that criteria is appropriate for a technical paper. Oh, I do.
Yeah, you too.
We want it to be something current, uh, they, we want it to.
Is that what currency means? I was thinking money. What does money have to do with that?
Well, it is, yes.
It's a very strange.
Information that is accurate and clear.
Or just current and accurate. That is current and accurate.
Whether the materials represent a fair and unbiased presentation of information while also representing as many shades of opinion as possible so that varying viewpoints are available to students.
It's a long sentence.
Don't you think as possible is too strong? As possible implies, it was a weird term.
Representing shades of opinion?
Shades of opinion is fine, but as possible, I think you need maybe.
So take out as many as possible and just leave shade, leave shades of opinion? Varying.
Varying shades, yeah.
While representing varying shades of opinion?
Variety of or various, right, why is it shades of opinion?
While representing varying viewpoints, just period?
Varying viewpoints, woo, there we go.
Take out all the rest of the.
So do we need the shades of opinion?
No, I think varying viewpoints cover shades of opinion, right?
I feel like shades of opinion is a strange phrase.
So represent varying viewpoints, period?
Or a fair and unbiased presentation of information that. That represents varying viewpoints?
Yes. Or just take out shades of opinion.
Represent a fair and unbiased presentation of information.
Representing, represent, present? Varying viewpoints, period?
Varying viewpoints.
Period.
Pretend to say represent, something. Varying.
Provide a fair and unbiased presentation of information representing varying viewpoints.
Yep.
Okay. Reflect a variety of cultural backgrounds. Maybe we could change that to reflect, I don't know, I'm just trying to keep in line with what we're going with. Whether the materials reflect a varying culture, reflect a variety of cultural backgrounds. Whether the materials represent age-appropriate material within grade band of each school. And whether the materials exclude any material with sexually explicit content, significant violence and excessive language.
That is excessive language. I mean, like, I feel like their writing is excessive language, so I, I think that maybe we, I just think we could just say like profanity or, or use a term that is less subjective there. And then significant violence, I mean, we have to read about war, we have to, so what does that mean? Like, what are, I think, like, trying to be more specific about the heart, that, the heart of the the matter, what are we really trying to accomplish?
I think we're trying to accomplish the definition of obscene materials.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Which is going back to nudity, sexual conduct, sexual excitement, sadomasochistic abuse.
I don't even want to Google that, but I, I think.
I think you can just put in there. Include any, any material that meets the harmful definitions.
Yeah, just reference the bill.
Obscene materials definitions.
I mean, you could put the definitions, but you could literally just list obscene materials, because that's what they're talking about.
And exclude any materials that.
Just quote the bill.
Qualify as obscene materials as defined in Idaho code, whatever it's going to be.
So the only question I have on that is when we're talking about the violence, is that something that, like, the harmful to children thing? So is that something that we need to address at all?
I think when, in this, significant violence might be more like sexual nature maybe, but you know, like rape and.
Yeah, so it's covered in that bill, so we don't need to elaborate on any of that.
But there are some, based on this, we have to talk about some of our books in our libraries, especially at our high school. About like World War II. You're going to have pictures that are graphic. Then you've got the Holocaust.
Stephen King books then would fall under that category, like any horror genre then would fall under that category?
No. Not unless, I mean, Stephen King is good at his provocative.
Yeah, but Stephen King, where he can let his children read his books.
Yeah, so he has a lot of. And actually, when you look at rating, Stephen King books are adult, and I think we're making a move to taking the adult books out of our school libraries.
So when you say that we'll have to talk about, you mean allowing books about World War II in there?
Well, we're just going to figure out how that fits in.
Okay.
Because of, like, you're showing clips in history classes of World War II, Vietnam, those things, and there may be body parts that are shown.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't, yeah.
That would be problematic, according to this.
You can't have Catherine Grant anymore because he has a bare bottom.
So we're talking about even cartoonish, like caricatures, anything?
Statues, drawings.
So basically, we're going into a puritanical, no art whatsoever, because heaven forbid.
Yes, okay, so, but that's what I'm asking, are we?
We're waiting. Our attorneys gathering information.
So we're going to consider whether the materials exclude obscene materials as defined in Idaho code. So the librarians will examine material to consult reputable, professionally prepared selection and selecting materials. They shall also seek to consider recommendations of material to acquire from teachers, student administrators and other district staff and community members as appropriate. The actual resource will be examined whenever possible.
What is the same?
That's a lot of stuff.
Absolutely terrible.
And we don't do that.
I don't, no.
I don't even know if it's necessary. You've already said that they're going to, they're going to do the collaborations of that part.
The librarian shall also consider whether new material formats such as online database, ebooks, streaming media, apps, et cetera, should be added to the library's collection. Factors to consider in this decision include current demand trends on, or growth in demand and strengths and weaknesses of the format. Accessibility to patrons with special needs should also be considered when purchasing materials.
I thought we weren't allowing patrons to check things out of our libraries. That was in one of the other policies.
It would be students with special needs, but.
But not patrons, yeah.
So do we have, do we combine databases and ebooks and streaming media in our libraries for students?
We, at one point, we actually did, the students did have access to books.
So they still have access to ebooks, okay. What about online databases?
I don't, Lily, online databases in the high school?
Well, we used to just recommend Lily.
Yeah, we still recommend Lily.
So we didn't have to purchase anything.
Right, because Lily gives us that scope for free and.
Yeah, pretty much that's it.
And so what is, what, what do kids do on Lily? What is Lily exactly?
It's just a, it's just an online library through the state. Our taxpayer dollars pay people.
So it's an ebook library?
It's like walking into a library, but online. So we give you access to encyclopedias, EBSCO, which students use in college. Teach them how to use EBSCO.
So this is, this is like when we were in college and we had to write a research paper, this was the, this was.
This would be your resource.
The way we can get that stuff for free. Because we live in Idaho.
It basically stands for libraries linking Idaho, and so it, the, the database goes to all academic libraries here within the state. Institutions, that kind of thing, so that's where they get all their information.
So they use that when they're writing research papers, okay.
They're taught.
Instead of going to Wikipedia? It's a better source for them to use.
A hundred percent.
Your booth has ebooks.
Yes.
Okay.
Some of us do, not all of us. And Sora has ebooks.
Sora has ebooks too. And that is.
So is the access to ebooks through another application, or is it that we have a library database of ebooks that we have in the library?
I think Melanie has some books herself.
Yeah, they can check them out right on Destiny.
Yeah, and then Sora is the, one of the library links that we have that is given to us by the state or whoever does Sora. And it has, it has audiobooks on there and it has ebooks on there, so you can check out books online on your computer, on your Chromebook or on your phone or whatever.
Okay.
But it's limited, there's only like 400 books in there. It's very limited.
They actually had opened a different app that we could, where we had access to 80,000, and I asked them not to give that access to kids because we didn't have any way of controlling, controlling what the kids had access to.
Parents can, if parents want their kids to have it, that's okay.
Right.
And so they can, they can link to Idea, which is by the ICFL, which has 20,000. But that's up to the parent if they want their child to go ahead and download.
We haven't given them access to that.
Into Sora.
But we do have access to Sora, which has.
Only about four.
Yes.
Is that part of, like, what you guys do with the weeding? Or is it, or is that like, like, do you do your weeding stuff? Is that the right word? So, but that's, that's what you guys include in that inventory process that you guys go through and.
We go through all the time, ebooks out of our library because they're outdated, they haven't been checked.
But in the online ones too, is that what it?
Oh, no, we don't.
Oh, okay.
So then if it's not our library, but you do have ebooks that are specific to a database that Lake, that the Lakeland North School District controls?
Yeah, I have.
But you do not?
Ten books.
You have ten books.
It's not very many. It was like when they first came out, we purchased a few, so it's like.
They tend to be expensive.
Yeah, they're very expensive.
With multiple use, we couldn't really afford them.
Yes.
I'm just trying to figure out, I, we need this paragraph, and if we do, I think we need to minimize the language in the sense that if it's things like Lily or the other platforms that we cannot control, how are you librarians managing the materials? You're not. It's simply by parental consent that the parents are actually giving authorization for their kiddos to go access it. So the responsibility is then no longer on the librarian's shoulders, it's on the parent's shoulders.
Well, the online database with Lily, anybody can access that on their Chromebook. I mean, we, we don't give them access to that. Anybody can use that.
You've just made it familiar to them.
Yeah, we just made it familiar.
They don't get books off of Lily. Lily is basically where we go to look up, when we're getting ready to purchase books, we'll go to Novelist and we'll look up books on Novelist and see, you know, if they're appropriate for our library, what the genre is, what the age level. The other stuff that's on Lily is, is it Common Core, is it Core? What is? There's some other things, so there's data, ways to, things to go into and databases to look at through EBSCO, through World Book, its encyclopedias, its dictionaries.
I would encourage everybody to go on Lily because there's, it's set up by age level and there is something for every length, age level.
Because we're not offering various forms.
No, anybody can access that. We just let them know, it's a better, a better place to search for information if you're going to. It's reputable.
May contain special corrections that reflect the unique character and mission of the schools.
I don't know of anybody that has a special collection.
So we have no special collections?
Janelle, special collection. Not that I'm aware of either.
Weeding. No, we don't want it to be a weeding. When materials no longer meet the criteria for selection, they shall be removed as part of the weeding process. I'll just do this. Except for the next one's Catholic. So much for quick tag. Weeding is a necessary aspect of selection since every library will contain works which may have answered a need at the time of acquisition, but which with the passage of time have become obsolete, weeded. It should be outgaven, unappealing or worn out.
You just skipped the middle part.
Can you just say become obsolete?
And I don't need, I don't know if you need to really define it as it may have been needed at the time of acquisition, just weeding is the process in which you.
Book containers that may have answered a need at the time.
Is that part of the disselection process, or is that part of the challenge process?
I don't think you would have picked it, hadn't been needed at the time.
Right, yeah, I don't, I don't know if any of that is necessary, just it's become obsolete. Weeding is removing materials that have become obsolete, just.
But sometimes they're not obsolete, they just have been read so much they look bad.
Yeah, they're falling apart.
Because they're falling apart.
Well, that's the worn out portion.
Or unappealing, the cover is so dated that nobody's going to check it out.
Exactly, yeah.
I think it might be, so people are judging books by their cover?
They do. Sometimes we buy them with a new cover because they will, the cover will, it is updated, so.
The cover is updated.
Yep. If we, if we feel it's a good book, we will first repurchase it, a new cover.
Do you buy food? I think we also always say weeding is removing materials that have been deemed inappropriate or have become.
The librarian of each school shall be responsible for ensuring the library's collection is reviewed for weeding regularly or in accordance with this procedure, or all materials shall be considered for disselecting for weeding based on accuracy, currency and relevancy. Space limitations, addition, format, physical condition and number of copies are considered when evaluating materials. The librarian will also consider how frequently an item is checked out or used by members of the school community to determine whether it still provides value. The reading process shall not be used to circumvent the process for reconsidering learning materials described in policy 2530 that we haven't done yet. Or is that 2520?
But we also set up deed to.
Parts are 2530 and 2520.
We can't reselect if we.
So 20 is 2030?
No.
There's over.
Forty is 20, but 30 is still 30.
Forty is the new 20, so yay.
That's his 57 game.
The librarian of each school shall be responsible for ensuring the library's collection is reviewed.
Can we just say reviewed regularly? Does it, do we have to say for weeding?
Read regularly in accordance with this procedure. All materials shall be considered for reading based on accuracy, currency. But apparently we're saying we're removing them because they're inappropriate, obsolete or outdated or worn out.
But I'm saying we can't do that because of policy 2530. But I, I mean, I remove books if I find them inappropriate.
Right, which you should, we shouldn't wait for somebody to challenge a book.
Right.
So that doesn't.
Yeah, I, I want to have that option to pull it without having to wait for, to challenge it.
Right. So do we have to have that all materials should be considered for weeding based on accuracy, currency and relevancy?
There we go, perfect. School librarian, librarians, should just be librarians.
I have a question, like, do you pull it? Does that, do you like, like note that somewhere like, oh, I pulled this notebook because I found it inappropriate, so that like, if, if later on there was another librarian, they got like a whole bunch of books and they're like, oh, I'm so excited that, you know, like, that it's noted somewhere that, oh, I actually read this and found this and so I decided not to have it in the library?
Just so that like.
We keep, we do keep a spreadsheet of things that we are pulling due to be inappropriate, and then, so that's why we cross-reference when other people are ordering, to make sure that we're not ordering it somewhere else.
Awesome, cool, thank you.
And also to more efficiently manage the collection. These processes should be prepared on or care replacement or material removed. Okay. What does this have to do? Again, this was written by IASDA. Is this a necessary?
No.
Okay, if that's what they're doing along with.
Well, I was going to say.
You're already doing that.
So do we have to have a P?
A P? I don't know.
A P? I don't think we're supposed to talk about.
I do, I think this basically is letting people know what happens, yeah. But I don't think the nitty gritty. But I don't think the nitty gritty. What's that?
I mean, we're, I mean, we'll just see when we finalize.
Well, very well, maybe.
At least we cross out a pretty good chunk of this.
Or it could just be a very short procedure, which we like.
Materials will be discarded in compliance with policy 9100 and Idaho code 33601?
That's not what we do.
I was gonna say, what is that?
Good to know.
I've already printed 9100 and that is not how we handle discarded material.
How do we handle it?
When we discard material, we mark out all the markings of our school. We take off all of the barcodes and everything. And then we offer it to teachers to use first if they want to use them for projects in their classroom. And then, or they can, like, they use for blackout poetry and they, or they cut them up for collages if they're picture books. And then if they don't want them, then we offer them to the children to take home for free.
Okay.
And then if nobody takes them after a while, unless we deem it inappropriate, then we don't put those out. But probably, I mean, some of those worn out Harry Potter books and stuff, kids are super excited to be able to keep those home. My son has brought some home and he has been so excited that. And they were cool books, they were just worn out. I think that's better than just throwing them away or, you know.
Yes.
She printed it out.
School acquisitions, use and disposal of school property.
Yes.
Okay, and we're not following this, is that what you're saying?
Because instead of just throwing them in the trash, we're giving them to people who actually.
Could use them first. Which is awesome. And we only give them to teachers and we only give them to students. We do not donate them. We, and then, like I said, after that, then we do just toss them out.
Less than five hundred?
And it needs the criteria to have to follow this policy.
I was gonna say, most of this looks like it'd be like furniture or.
Yeah, no, anything that's furniture or something like that, obviously we would, we would follow that policy but if it's just a library book.
So maybe we just need to, for the public's confidence, just specify what you do with the inappropriate books.
Yeah.
Like, we don't put those in the hands of children.
We don't put those back out.
Maybe just with like the public's peace of mind, like, please, in our policy, this is how we dispose of them.
Well, and it says with the exception of curricular materials.
Throw them away.
Give them for blackout poetry. Pre-reactive.
Gift materials may be accepted in accordance with.
No, we don't donate those ever.
Is it largely because of the condition?
With the understanding that they may meet.
Yeah, outdated usually.
Or books. School librarian shall evaluate whether a donated item meets the criteria for acceptance and ensures it is added to the collection to be discarded according to the criterion and procedure. Gifts and donations, like purchased resources, will be removed from the collection at the end of their useful life. Donated materials that do not meet the district's criteria for inclusion in the library collection may be used for other purposes. This may include altering or cutting out portions of a book or other.
So see, we're following policies.
Like under gift.
I would think that in that paragraph, and I'm not, where that library board would probably also come into play.
For adding new books?
Yeah, because that way the librarian's not on the hook for anything that might be. She would.
Well, why would it be any different than the books we work? I would think.
Well, we get, we do get books donated to us, like brand new books from authors and stuff. And we have to go through the whole approval process and check it to make sure that it's appropriate for our school before.
We would follow.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, yeah.
It's so hard though because they want you to take them. And then you end up having to throw them away.
Yes.
So I would say.
Oh, I, well, sometimes we get brand new books from the authors. Those ones I will look at, we get that Western one every single year. Yes. They're all sitting on my back counter. But donated books from like, kids try to donate books and stuff and I.
Or like families, like I'm thinking of my father's estate, here's three.
Yeah, I don't want. No, I like to buy them in our library binding, so I don't usually take them.
Surely evaluate whether a donated donation, whether a donated donation meets the criteria.
Oh, he's going to be graduating. Can I donate them to you? And I look at him, I go, Phil.
We were just talking about, you know, because they obviously don't, you know, give the books that were deemed inappropriate to the children and stuff. I wonder if just for the public's confidence, if we had a quick blurb that books deemed inappropriate are, are thrown away. Or like, just so that they don't think that those are included in, in any way that's gonna work their way back to the kids. Like, I don't think any of us think that's what's happening, but that might instill some confidence that we. That was deemed inappropriate. Or just disposed of.
But she's specifically calling out the ones that are inappropriate so that nobody thinks that we're gonna dispose of these and stay with them.
Well, I mean, we're not donating children or teachers on them, yes.
So what are we doing with them? I mean, do we just toss them in the garbage?
They go in the trash, yeah.
We actually, that's not quite true. Don't you go through the inventory disposal process on the sheet? Don't you put old retired books or whatever?
If we had lots of them, we would.
That's the, that's actually our process is, yeah, inventory disposal.
And then they go to.
But if we just pulled one off the shelf, we just toss it.
It's all, you just skip it. There's a pause.
That's right.
So what material?
But are they just in the garbage?
Is deemed inappropriate shall be disposed of through the inventory disposal process.
Mommy, here's.
Yes, okay, thank you, sorry to back you up now.
I appreciate that. Weeded materials and donated books may be accepted in accordance with policies and procedures. Whether a donated item meets the criteria for acceptance and ensure it is added to the collection or discarded according to.
Why would you even accept something that you're gonna have to throw away?
I would say. Well, I mean, if someone comes in with.
Sometimes they just drop them off and then they get delivered to the library.
Now I know what I'm getting.
Down on the doorstep. That's when you refuse the.
I don't. Maybe we can add inventory disposal process, something to accommodate this in the sense that if they get it and they're like, no, they can just throw it in the garbage and it's not cataloged. I mean, because if, if it's a gift or a donation and it's not cataloged in, they should have the right just to toss it.
Right. So then would you put accordingly instead of to the inventory disposal process? Discarded accordingly? This is why we keep you around, Melanie. Good job.
So what are gift materials?
Donations.
Yeah, I mean.
But what, I don't get a gift, I've never had gift materials. I don't even know what, what is that encompass as far as putting it on here?
Yeah, well, it says books, but it's a gift material and so what's the materials?
What's the gift?
Like if somebody like donated, like, equipment to the library?
You don't have equipment.
We've made those out.
We've been having kids all day, it's just nice to be around them.
Like a 3D printer or something could be gifted.
I did get gifted one and it didn't, didn't ever work.
We were gifted one and then it was taken away.
I'm guessing somebody made something they were supposed to?
Donated materials that do not meet the district's criteria for inclusion may not be used.
Because if there's, because that would mean there's something inappropriate.
Don't donate it. I don't even know if that whole sentence is even like, like, do we wanna put a bigger thing on their plate with that? Maintaining, like, that whole, you know, explains to the donors the practice regarding just accepting. Yeah. And then maintains a list of suggestion, suggestions, materials that a donor might purchase for that. Right, I feel like that's a whole nother, another ball of wax that you have to. I just don't know if any of that is necessary. Or is that something you already do? So, I mean, if someone comes in to donate something, I would just look at it and I would probably tell them that.
The public's library would love to have.
Or one of those like little neighborhood libraries where. I don't know if we gotta like add any expectation that you might have a list of materials that they could purchase. But I mean, like, maybe just scrapping the whole, the whole bit. Yeah, most of the time. I just don't accept them. Well, if somebody really wanted to donate something useful, you could have that conversation then, but not necessarily something we need in the policy.
Are there lists anywhere of materials that the library would like to have or that teachers would like parents to consider applying for the library? I mean, do, do we have that?
Yeah, a wish list, sometimes your elementary schools would be for book fair.
But, I mean, it's, it's not a, out there all the time.
No.
That wish list is very specific to the book fair.
Yeah, but that would, yeah, we don't have.
Where is disselection?
It's on there twice. Oh, good.
So it's gifts.
I actually think it's okay to have procedures separate. It's short, I mean, it's like, basically it's a nice little checklist for the librarian.
And while I think it's not protocol specific, which is something that's done in-house, it lets the public know this is the expectation for selection. And this is what's supposed to be followed. I think that works.
People actually read it when the policies and procedures are short.
Yes, they do. Nobody wants to read.
Pages, yeah, pages.
Okay, so. The form's not on here, okay. Is it? Oh, that's for, that's at the end of the packet, that's for the schools, that's for classrooms stuff.
Perfect.
So 25, 20.
So they literally took 2520 and 2540 and merged it all together.
Okay.
So it's.
Just in this?
All, but that's formally, and I can pull up 2540 and 2520, but it's originally named. We just combined it all in one.
So this is not specific to the library, this is.
This is a curricular material.
The term curricular material is defined as textbooks, instructional media, including software, audio, visual media and their own resources. Put right, I'd like to see what we've, we have prescriptions. Textbooks, instructional media, including software.
Does this include teacher included material? Teacher created material. Does this include teacher created material? We're all scared. That's a can of worms.
I don't know that it's a can of worms.
We're on the top of 2520.
I think that if it's gone through the appropriate processes, then yeah, it would include it. But if it hasn't, then it's not supposed to be being used.
So we're doing an activity, we create our own worksheet that goes along with that activity, then that worksheet would not be allowed to be used unless it was approved previously.
If it's curriculum and it's taught to kids, it needs to be approved.
But the curriculum was approved. I'm teaching out of a textbook, the textbook went through the policy, the process, everything's golden there. And I'm using material from that textbook to create my own worksheet, that worksheet would not be usable.
I don't know.
And we get to a point in our classrooms where we see students struggling and they need it broken down and we need to create something quick to continue that learning process. And so if it has to be stuck in a committee for weeks, those kids are losing out on that instructional time. Also, there's current events, there are things that are happening right now that.
And I don't think I need, well, I mean, I don't plan months in ahead of what worksheet I'm gonna need. And then that's how long it, it takes to get my materials. So then that makes it hard because I don't plan out entry tasks months in advance just so I can get it, make sure everything, so it's hard with entries and stuff because just small assignments here and there that you're like, oh, I need something.
Or we have a totally different.
Or like intervention time.
One of the things that we were talking about is that if the curriculum has gone through the policy, the procedures, the board, the committees and all of that, and you have okayed us to teach the curriculum that we are teaching, then under that umbrella should then be certain activities or worksheets or whatever that created by ourselves or still cover that same identical curriculum without it necessarily having to go through an additional vetting process of okayness.
And I agree with you, but I do believe within the policy there needs to be language that supports that. Because if it's not there, then you're left in ambiguity and we're stuck as a board member. We're ultimately responsible, so.
No, that's, that's what we're here for, that's what we wanna make.
That's also part of our evaluation process that we are adapting and.
Meeting the kids.
Yeah, we're, we're supposed to be teaching within domain, but if we just have to go with, oh, this is what's in the textbook, this is something.
That's not something that like is viewed within my scope of.
That's not the way. Okay, fair enough. What I'm trying to say is we need to put language within the policy that gives teachers the ability to navigate those situations with the materials that have been approved to create whatever they need for students.
Does that make sense?
Wait a minute.
What's my question?
You know what I mean? So does that make sense? You could, if you have a file, you have it all over. Because I think that's too.
That's scary. And I don't know if you guys understand that.
If they have to use extra things, then the teacher, the teacher maintains a file of what was. Yeah, but is that reasonable?
So that's where it's important for me, that we can have the policy say what we want it to say. It needs to be conducive to what our district is doing so that we're supporting teachers and teachers understand that we're just trying to live within the guidelines of the law. That's, that's all we're trying to do, not bind your hands, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the entire board. That out there, that I don't wanna bind your hands. I think that every teacher has the ability to be creative beyond belief with their students. They're in there, they learn how to reach those kiddos. And there isn't just a curriculum packet or book that's going to reach every single child. I absolutely know that 120%. So that's all I'm saying, is we just have, when I'm talking about processes, this is the process. We have to have it in policy.
Can we just make it kind of near the library, what we did in the library one when we said that.
Can we just make it kind of near the library, what we did in the library one, when we said that we entrust the librarians to create, and we went through the process of we're passing it down to the superintendent, the principal, then the librarian. Can we just say something similar, like, we're entrusting the teachers to create curriculum that will.
Well, not curriculum, not curriculum. Materials that align with the curriculum that has already been approved by the policy.
I can totally support that, which I would think so for the rest of the board. But Jack.
That would be, yeah, that'd be great, because then it opens the door, so, you know, we have high school math teachers who are telling me we don't have enough practice problems for the kids in the textbook, and I said to them, we'll print some practice problems off, and they're like, you can't do that.
Well, on the curriculum, the supplemental curriculum, I think there's two sites this time that are, they're just worksheet generated sites because they don't, they wanted to go through approval before they used them because they were afraid, and they're literally math worksheet generated sites, so they're.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, let's figure out what the language needs to be. The term curricular materials is defined as textbooks, instructional media, software, audio, visual media, and internet resources.
There's nothing in there about that.
Well, that's because the law doesn't govern supplemental curriculum at all, because it's all curriculum. That was one of the clarifications we got three years ago, was that things were being hidden under supplemental because then that didn't need approval, but the law's extremely clear, curriculum is curriculum. If you're teaching it to a child, it's curriculum, whether it's not a textbook or whether it's.
So, how does that separate from twenty-five, thirty, where it talks about learning materials? Is that kind of, are we saying that learning materials and curriculum are one and the same? Because on the, on its page it talks about.
Learning materials would be, you know, science book learning materials, whether you're studying.
It says just any material used in classroom instruction, and that is in correspondence or in, in conjunction with curriculum. Curriculum is the topic, and then the materials are the things in which we use to teach the topic, so.
So, what.
I'm sorry. Okay.
So, let me just tell you, just.
So, because here we're talking about define this textbook instructional media, those are all, I think, would be under the guise of learning materials because those are the things that we use to teach the curriculum.
So, we have the curriculum. These have been. All I, all I'm saying is, to Michelle's point, is that because supplemental materials weren't specifically called out, we used to not bring those, and now we are, so it needs to show up somewhere, I guess, is what I'm saying. So, if we're talking about curriculum, supplemental materials is part of the learning material. But we could call it learning materials.
But worksheets and things like that would be considered learning materials, I would think, because they're the things that we create to help them with that curriculum, so.
Right, supplemental curriculum is.
Well, it doesn't make sense.
Right, but.
Or even like, but what about online news articles that just happen, current events, like, what about?
Is that learning material or is that?
Because that's not, like, there's no way that could go through.
That's gotta be part of this.
What is the difference between a learning material and a curriculum?
Right.
Because to me, those should be the same thing. I, I don't, I mean, what, what is the gap we're looking at from word?
When you look at the language, which is really overlapping, there, there, I feel like twenty-five, twenty-four.
Any material used in classroom instruction, library materials are any materials.
So, for my case, this is not a convention, but if you look at the policies, I would say twenty-five, forty, twenty now. It's specific to the textbooks, adoption, there's just, it's more of an adoption process.
Like the pre-planned, pre-purchased.
That kind of thing, textbook big, this is more about, um, just materials.
Teachers creation.
No, because it's not limited to board approved curriculum.
Right, what I'm saying though is learning materials, that's where teacher created adoption just follows.
I would probably designate it as one is really specific to adoption curriculum, textbook, the other one is learning materials.
Which is that what we call supplemental materials.
So, should we review learning materials before jumping to curriculum and understanding that curriculum is very specific?
That one is a lot bigger, there's a lot.
Big dollars.
Lot more pages to twenty-five, thirty.
Twenty-five, thirty has.
Twenty-five, twenty is just, I don't.
I don't have a.
If we're differentiating the two, if we're differentiating the two, I don't have a problem with twenty-five, twenty slash forty now. If it's supplemental and the day-to-day stuff is now going to be out from twenty-five, twenty. So, then I think it might be faster to go through twenty-five, twenty.
I just tried to stay in line.
No, and that's, that's what I, we just want to have that conversation, we want to make that conversation because we would like it to be put into policies that teachers understand what exactly, and we're not. Going through the vetting process, which is what we still have to run all the time, we need to do, and our classes under the guise that the curriculum that we're teaching has already been approved.
No, and I, I understand that, so.
But there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of stress, a lot of nobody, and like, no, I mean, they're.
And I understand that, and it was never intended to become that way, unfortunately it has, so we need to fix this.
Yes.
And that's what we're.
So, we're gonna talk about.
The term supplemental materials is defined as textbooks, instructional media, including software, audio, visual media, and internet resources.
Internet, sorry, does internet resources include websites that are updated daily? I mean, I, uh, now, of course, can't think of any.
We have, we have had some internet sites that have been pervy like the board for use in the classroom.
Okay.
Just generally.
Okay.
Okay. Curriculum committees will be responsible for recommending textbooks and major instructional materials for consideration by the board as curricular materials. This includes materials that are, that are and are not covered. And will take curricular materials.
I feel like you could take that out, because the state right now, I mean, they're gonna come back to do it to recommendations, but.
They don't have a state.
Right, but they talked about coming back to that, I, they haven't yet, though.
But they used to have a list where we could only adopt from what was on that.
But they talked about bringing back recommendations, they just haven't yet.
So, this does not include library materials, however, it does include, curricular includes materials.
It's the same.
Yeah, it is.
They copied that sentence again.
Sort of. All right, so.
And then up at that first sentence, do we have to have as curricular materials at the end, or can it just end with consideration by the board?
The board shall establish a curricular materials adoption committee for the purpose of advising the board on selection of curricular materials for use within the district. At least half of this committee must be comprised of persons other than public educators and trustees, and shall include parents of a child or children attending a school or schools within the district. All meetings of the committee shall be held in open session and be duly noticed.
Which we do. We post.
I don't think we do that.
But I don't think that that's actually in statute.
Committees.
The committees. But the committee is, but not that it is that we posted, or we have never done that before.
Or like the supplemental curriculum committee.
No, 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 they're talking about the adoption committee.
Oh, 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 it should be that, it should be posted.
It should be.
Because it's a subcommittee of the board, just like our policy committee, and can we spell out the word half instead of putting?
You don't like the fraction?
I know that.
Start when we talk.
We've, we've learned something new tonight, so that's just where we pick it up.
We didn't have any policy before.
So, if the policy's been, or if the curriculum has been recommended, what, there's, then there's a secondary adoption committee?
No, 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 they're talking about, so take out supplemental curriculum, this is just like, I'm adopting a math textbook. Like, I'm going, like, you're Spanish.
Right.
And so, we're, by law, and it passed last year or the year before, you have to have, half of the committee is community members, and you can only have as many as you have as community, you can have that many teachers. But that's for a traditional, like, adoption, not for.
So, we're, we're doing social studies this year, we had an adoption committee, and it was made up of parents and staff, that's what this is.
But I can't invite teachers until I know how many parents and committee members I'm gonna have. And so, like, I, I sent out an application, because that's in law, that's not a, a thing, that's the law. And so, I think I had, you know, thirty parents sign up for it, so then I can invite thirty teachers. But if I had five, I can only invite five teachers, does that make sense?
And if you're a teacher and a patron, you're still a teacher.
Yeah, even if you're out of the district.
I'm in the district.
No, 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 but like, we had, we had people that signed up, and so, when I had to count them, they were teachers in another district.
Oh, I see.
They counted as a teacher, so they took one of our spots.
Oh, I see.
That's the law.
Well, if they have.
Oh, they're tired, oh, okay.
I'm tired, because they care that they teach somewhere else.
Yeah. Sorry.
Why do they care though?
I don't understand, okay.
Yeah.
They're just bored.
It's a great way to meet people.
That's old. How current is this law?
That one's old, because the needle losses. The needle losses that it has to be fifty percent.
It's updated in twenty twelve.
It says nineteen eighty-six.
Yeah, but you keep going down, it's every year.
For two thousand one?
And then two thousand twelve.
But in twenty twenty-nine or twenty twenty, it was changed again.
This was your jam.
And maybe they changed the number of it, so it's like.
It's, uh. It's thirty-three, five, twelve, A. So, it says the board of trustees of each school district shall appoint a curricular materials adoption committee to advise the board on selection of curricular materials. Idaho code, as in section thirty-three, one eighteen, for use within the schools, the district selection committee shall contain a membership of at least one half of which is persons who are not public educators or school trustees, and shall include parents of a child or children attending the school. All meetings of the committee shall be open to the public, and any member of the public may attend such a meeting and file written or make oral objections to any curricular materials under consideration. Each school district shall have on hand and available to the public the titles, authors, and publishers of all curricular. The public has the right to inspect and accept students' tests, so this doesn't say anything about posting it, but.
That's okay, we, we'll just start, that's all we can do.
Because curricular committee was, that's one of the three committees called unstatute for subcommittees of the board, right? Curricular, budget, policy?
All right, so. The committee must be comprised of persons other than public educators. And shall include parents of a child or children attending.
Can we just say attending school within the district?
Yeah.
Lawyers like to put lots of words.
But all meetings of the committee shall be held in open session and duly noticed. The curricular materials adoption committee shall conduct its business in compliance with the state open meeting law.
There's the duly noticed.
So, do we need that? Any person may submit oral or written objections to any curricular materials under consideration.
Can that be clarified with district personnel or?
Any person who reads.
In the district?
But that's law.
So, any, and, so not even a resident of our district? Or kids with kid.
I'm gonna pull it back up, but I, I read that.
Wow, any person, wow.
Well, you know. If they're bored and.
It says it's open to the public, and any member of the public may attend such a meeting and file written or make oral objections to any curricular materials under consideration, so it just says member of the public.
So, is that our public?
Doesn't specify that.
It's the public.
So, that means.
Oh, the public.
Because it says the public has the right to inspect the instructional materials.
So much fun.
Recommendations will be made to the superintendent with a final decision being made by the board. Being made by the board, what? The function of the committee is to ensure that materials are selected in accordance with the state criteria established, obstacles, and objections.
So, just a question on the notice, can you just have your notice be to our public? I mean, like, how, is there?
The notice just is what we.
Here for the windows.
Letting them.
Oh, okay, so it's not, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's not like we shoot out.
Same as what we do for a board meeting, just repost the agenda in that, that board.
It used to be posted at our schools.
Yeah, it used to be on our refrigerator, that would sound forever.
Just that maybe like, not, not putting it like on the national.
That changes that, because it's driving us, we made. By the. Committee to the superintendent. With a final decision being made by the board. What the final decision.
Made.
Rest of the board?
Yeah, rest of the board.
The final decision.
Rest of the board, or, it seems very deep.
Is the board making a final decision?
For dual credit courses offered through institutions of higher education, the selection, adoption, and removal of curricular materials is handled by the provider. The district has no control over the selection, adoption, and removal of curricular materials, and it is the responsibility of the parent of knowledge and, of and or review such prior to the student enrollment.
Such materials?
Or such common. Would cover.
Right, yeah.
Review of such, play it too.
Prior to student enrollment. After your credit course. Selection and adoption, the curricular materials adoption committee should develop, prior to this, prior to selection, a set of selection criteria against which curricular materials will be evaluated. Okay, so since, when you control all this, what is your processes, and does this meet the processes that you have currently in place?
You mean, I control the shooting only during the adoption committee?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so, we could put in our vetting process, I mean, they're looking for enrich and support the curriculum. We're looking for alignment with standards, we're looking for it doesn't meet the, there isn't CRT, there isn't sexually explicit, there isn't inappropriate content that's not within that grade band.
Okay.
The rest of this, they're not really looking at.
So, maybe we go through the ones that are there and strike out those that don't pertain, and then add the, the ones that, that we are using.
I mean, enrich and support the curriculum, I don't think that's accurate, because you're replacing, you're supplanting the current curriculum. So, ideally, you want alignment with your standards.
Which would be number three, I think, we can.
Right. Instructional objectives and standards.
Yeah.
I think you could cross through one. I do think you're looking for, you as a teacher, you're looking for stimulate growth in knowledge, learning, appreciation, a set of value and ethical standards. Yeah?
Michelle.
That's why we have, I mean, yeah, to do, update, so that way, kind of like judging them by what's covered. When they're making comments about things from the early nineties, students have no.
I guess what my point is, is it says the curricular adoption committee should develop prior to the selection. So, they're not doing that, we already have it in place, so that's what I'm.
So, you can say the selection committee will use a set of selection criteria.
Or will, will judge. Square.
Will evaluate.
Evaluate based on this set of selection criteria.
Materials based on. And then period after selection criteria.
Is that right?
Just leave that there.
My fingers are not happy tonight.
This is my baby. This is my baby.
Along with other appropriate. Literary appreciation, aesthetic value, and ethical standards. Be congruent with identified instructional objectives.
I think that it'd be, I think alignment with state standards should stand as a separate one and not get muddied with the instructional.
Okay. So, you guys, buy, provide background information, enable students to make. I don't, I don't, that's, that's not true. I don't do that.
Try to avoid controversial issue.
But we do present more than one viewpoint on controversial. If we, like, in social studies, that definitely you're looking to be presented.
Say on issues.
I was going to say, that's what we did on the last.
Take out the controversial.
Took out controversial.
Provide varied viewpoints.
I feel like they wrote this through the lens of the social studies adoption.
Should be.
Very viewpoints, yeah.
Nice.
I don't necessarily say when we're, when we're looking, we're doing seven or eight. We weren't really looking for alignment. Your standards speak to those pieces.
This is definitely like a social studies.
Yeah.
We don't look for that.
I would say you're taking off seven, eight, well, nine and 10 to be exact same thing. I would take off, and we can't look at appropriately priced. What does that mean? I would take off nine through 12. But we are, and I think you could just reference one that says something that follow district board policy. And then we could cite, you know, the CRT and.
Just have a line with.
Board policy, yeah.
I feel a lot better because I was reading through those. I'm like, I don't feel like this is possible.
No, this was like, I mean, it's a vetting rubric for a social studies program.
So, lines of board policies and resolutions.
Perfect. Because when we, so, let's think about what we do look for. So, we look for the ability to differentiate. So, that needs to be in there.
We look at, well, you're looking, we're talking about a rubric. We use, we look for usability, we look for alignment, we look for assessment tools.
Those are the things that need to be in here. Because that's, that's what our criteria are.
Or you could say, or, and, other.
Well, we, she, she struck that.
What?
Struck what? The or other applicable criteria. I'd rather list out what we actually.
Okay.
Just make.
Oh, I see. But is that a separate policy? Like, the.
No, we're, these are the, this is about what are the criteria we're looking at. And so, we're going to add the ones, we took out all the things we don't pay attention to.
Were those four bullet points?
Um, usability.
So, well, okay, we're ensure usability.
Differentiation is a.
I feel like number seven, kind of like.
Renunciation.
Nine, 10.
And then there's a separate one for assessment.
Tools.
Like to.
They're cutting that.
No, I understand that. I guess I'm still questioning.
But you think you could.
I'm just, we're doing some.
Well, because if you're looking at curriculum.
I think you're, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for ensure usability.
Alignment with standards.
Well, it's alignment and accuracy with the standards.
The non-steroids, you do want the cultural differences. I feel like it does still pop up like, you know, like an umbrella weight.
So, I think that's, I mean, when you look at all of our rubrics.
To social studies.
That's what we're looking for.
Huh? Not in my home. Well, it's in there before I came in here. So, somebody thought of it.
Ensure usability, differentiation, assessment tool, and support.
That's what usability is.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it's the teaching brand light, you know. I mean, just that's what's all.
I see how it is most.
How that is your friendly.
We've seen that same stuff.
So, we could define that.
Which is, which is.
Security.
And then.
Self-confidence.
Is because of that.
Yeah. It's really scaffolding support.
Materials for scaffolding support.
For differentiation.
For differentiation. We got a hot one over here.
Well, just looking, just looking at eight, nine, and 10, I feel like number seven's trying to like round that up all to just like one point. But.
Differentiation.
I understand how that would maybe be a big focus for social studies. But I feel like with the.
Now you're talking about.
I'm going back to like the strikeouts of seven, eight, nine, 10.
Now the numbers are off, but like.
Yeah, the ones that were in their report. I feel like we do look for those non- stereotypes. We do look for those cultural differences, whether it's in I-ready math or in the ELA. I feel like it does pertain to, it's more of like an umbrella for all curriculum instead of just one subject.
But we don't have, it's not measurable. So, how would we, if like, we were, that's, I mean, I would just go back to when we're looking at the data that we're pulling when we are looking, there isn't a set criteria that we can measure or observe. That's part of the alignment with your standard. So, I feel like it's embedded in. But we don't have a separate word, did this. That's not a checkoff at all. So, we're trying to just make it really concrete. Like, if somebody were to ask us about our process, these are the five things that we do and we actually have an observable.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
No.
Because I feel like all of that is embedded in your alignment with your standards.
Okay.
And your accuracy with your standards.
Okay.
Because I wouldn't be able to prove that we did have somebody questioned. You know what I mean?
No, I do.
And I guess I would hope that we wouldn't be finding or using, using resources that didn't present minorities realistically or not, have non- stereotypes.
Right. But like in your standards, that you're supposed to do something on, you know, US history, you have to present all of those perspectives. Like, we're doing something on world history, you know, whatever.
But, I mean, like, in all fairness, like, didn't we pull our I-ready reading curriculum because it didn't go with number seven? So, I mean, like.
Because we felt like it didn't align to our CRT resolution.
Okay, okay. So, that would kind of fall in.
It was through another policy.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I feel like it's easier if it's, if it's something we measure and it's part of our rubric process. So, that's just one of the things we're checking out. Does it, does it, does it go against any of our board policies? Does it, you know?
Do we have a, something somewhere with the definition of CRT?
In our resolution. Trustee Kristen wrote it. It's on the policy. Pretty sure it's the policy.
Where we're looking at. Board of trustees?
School board and then go to policies and resolutions. I'll show you.
Review.
So, not, not, no, policies and resolutions.
Yeah, so it's right here. So, these are our resolutions.
Is it numbers or?
It's the date that it was done.
Okay, so, all the search through there.
No, for. We put them by the date, but then you have to search. Like, nobody would know. I just want to ask that question if we can because she, like, she's like, which one is it?
Okay, it took me four years to get it so that people can actually read it. So.
Do you feel like we could do what we have here, here?
That would be amazing. That would be absolutely amazing.
I'll ask Jack.
Perfect. That's awesome. That's exactly what we're looking for.
Okay, so, that's what we're looking for.
We're going to put the names on it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Or you could just click.
Well, I will. I said I was doing, I was like, hey, we're going to say, when do you do information? Lots were done in 21. So.
21.
Well, when was Ramona?
All right.
Wonder if people, it is 6:30.
And we do our best to respect time here. So, we're going to go ahead and.